All right. All right, it is now six thirty-six. I'm gonna bring this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order along with the Longdale Housing Authority and the Longdale Successive Agency. It's six thirty. This meeting is now in order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the call, please.
All right, good evening. Mayor Protem Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hawthorne Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas. Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present except for Councilmember Cuevas at this time.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Hawthorne Gorman to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by the Reverend Matthew Orberston from Longdale Westland Church, gonna lead us in a word of inspiration.
Place your right hand over your heart and recite along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Good evening, members of the council. O gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather and the opportunity for civil discourse. We thank you for democracy. We thank you for the chance to be able to be present with one another. We ask that as people are here to speak on behalf of different things, as far as the members of the community and outside entities, we ask that people would be peaceable and that this would be an opportunity for cool heads to prevail and that for good things to happen in this city. We thank you for the opportunity for us to continue to be present with one another in an open setting. We're no longer in Zoom or other things. And we also ask that we have good facilities in store for us, as this is our last night in this chamber for a while, but we ask that good things happen and the result of this meeting, good decisions will be made. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor for those words of inspiration. Thank everyone for being here tonight. Okay. Let's start with our public safety report tonight. Let's hear from our captain. Captain Nicole Palomino. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's Dean Members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for April sixteenth through May sixth. And I will begin by discussing our notable arrests and investigations. So on April sixteenth, at approximately six fifteen P.M., Deputy Joseph Rodriguez conducted a traffic stop on Hawthorne Boulevard near Marine Avenue regarding several vehicle code violations. Deputy Rodriguez contacted the two occupants and located an unregistered firearm. The passenger was arrested for being in possession of an unregistered firearm, and the driver was arrested for driving on a suspended license. Neither of them were residents of Longdale. And then on April seventeenth, at approximately six thirty A.M., Deputy Anthony Sanchez observed a vehicle parked near one hundred and sixtieth Street and Somber Avenue and contacted the occupants regarding vehicle code violations. Deputy Sanchez conducted a lawful search of the vehicle and discovered cocaine, fentanyl, and alprazolam, which is also known as Xanax, and other evidence indicative of narcotic sales. Both occupants were arrested for various narcotics-related charges, and neither of them were residents of Longdale. And then on May first, the Longdale Special Assignment Deputies partnered with detectives from the Task Force for Regional Auto Theft Prevention, also known as TRAP, and conducted an auto theft saturation patrol in the city of Longdale. S.E.O. deputies and TRAP detectives recovered six stolen vehicles during their operation. Regarding our traffic-related incidents, Motorcycle Traffic Enforcement Deputy Morales issued approximately twenty citations during the reporting period, which included violations such as failing to stop at a stop sign and speeding. Deputy Morales also monitored for drivers who violated the traffic light laws on Hawthorne Boulevard, as well as individuals who violated the vehicle code while riding their electric bikes. And then lastly, tomorrow, on Tuesday, May seventh, at seven P.M., the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department will be participating in the city of Longdale's first neighborhood watch meeting at the Longdale Community Center located at one four seven zero zero Bearden Avenue. I encourage Longdale residents to attend, attend the meeting, and discuss public safety issues unique to their individual neighborhoods. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Captain, for that report. Any questions of the captain's report? Yes, ma'am.
Of course I'm gonna comment here. Thank you for the report. I cannot tell you how thrilled I am to know that our bad guys that we're catching in the city are not Longdale residents. So, hooray, and thank you to those two officers on their hard work of getting those bad guys off of our streets. I just wanted to add, I would also like something to be said to Officer Julian Sterns. I don't know how many people know this, but on Friday night, he not only represented the South L.A. Sheriff's Station, but he also represented Longdale in the singing of the National Anthem at the Dodgers' game. He did an outstanding job. In fact, I'm going to request, Michael, if we don't have anybody signed up for Memorial Day to sing the National Anthem, maybe that might be a good place to extend an, a request. Outstanding.
Thank you.
Did an absolutely beautiful job. So again, on behalf of myself and any other Longdale resident that happened to watch the game.
Yeah.
He was a great representation of our community. Please thank him for us.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Cap.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from L.A. County Fire. Yes, sir. Acting Assistant Fire Chief, Brian King. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the month of April, our fire department report was a hundred and ninety-one total responses. Two of those were outdoor or rubbish-type fires. Nothing remarkable as it stands for those. A hundred and twenty total EMS responses, fifty-six of those required ALS interventions by our paramedics, and eleven responses with our APRU within the city. End of report unless there's any further questions from the fire department.
Okay, that's all you got for me?
That's all I got.
I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Any questions of the Assistant Acting City? You got a long title there.
Thank you.
Acting Assistant Fire Chief.
That's right.
There you go. Any questions of his report?
Just a comment. Thank you for keeping us abreast on that new program. I look forward to that program being instilled in our fire department permanently because I think it helps emergency medicine all the way around to be able to have those physicians, assistants, and nurse practitioners onboard with you.
It's having a significant impact within the city as well as our local hospitals. So I think it's here to stay, hopefully.
Yes, very exciting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Now on item, item D, item D one. Also, just so, without any objection, I'm gonna move up item seventeen, which is appointment to the YAC Committee after item two. Just so everyone can kind of be aware of that. Meanwhile, item D one, this is a proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Week, the week of May fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Presentation to the City Clerk's Department. This year marks the fifty-fifth year of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, has recognized the office of professional municipal clerks. The City Clerk Department provides vital services to the city and the community. Now, some of the responsibilities of a municipal city clerk's office may include maintaining the official council minutes, ordinances, books, and all the records and documents, processing contracts and agreements, working closely with the city department daily on items of research and information gathering, the organization and review of the retention process of the city's official records, and compiling and processing the agenda for the city council meetings, as well as other special meetings. At this time, I am pleased to invite our elected city clerk, Erica Harbison. Give a round of applause. Assistant Clerk, Yvette Hall. Administrative Assistant Vanessa Alvarez. This is the department. Right. The clerks, the City Clerk's Department. And these ladies do a fine job as our City Clerk's Department. It's a small but mighty department. So on behalf of the Longdale City Council and the city council members and the community, I'm pleased we, to accept this, for you to have accepted this gratitude for your hard work. As the keepers of the official records, you are an important part of the functioning of the city of Longdale. We appreciate all of your dedication to those tasks and duties that you fulfill every day. Please accept this proclamation as we reckon, as we recognize the duties and the work of your office and proclaim the week of May fifth through eleventh as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Longdale. And we'll come up to the podium for a picture. They normally don't do this, but that's why Yvette's a little shy. Come on now. Okay, Madam City Clerk, look at this. It's fit for framing. The framing is so separate. So you'll have to rotate it much, much in your office. Your office, but I want to present you with this. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
I just want to present this before the city council, for the entire staff, all of your hard work and your commitment here in the city of Longdale, municipal clerk, professional municipal clerk, week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May fifth through the eleventh. That's what it says. Congratulations. You guys should stay together.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
On three. One, two, three. Focus up close. One, two, three. I think we're good. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Good job, Eric.
Good job.
These ladies.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So you think it's a go-home?
Okay, no, we're gonna do two, then we'll do seventeen. Yeah, let's have a presentation at this time. We move to item two under D, a presentation by AT&amp;T. Mackenzie Neil Wright, External Affairs from AT&amp;T, will give us a presentation on what's happening at AT&amp;T. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me. All right, so, good evening. My name is Mackenzie Neely Wright, and I am honored to have the opportunity to introduce myself to the city of Longdale. Thank you, Mayor Protem Bernadette Suarez, for the invitation, and it is a pleasure to meet you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, residents, and participants of this meeting. I am the External and Legislative Affairs Area Manager for the city of Longdale, along with the majority of the South Bay, except Hawthorne, as well as mid and south Los Angeles for AT&amp;T. Our purpose at AT&amp;T is connecting people to greater possibility through AT&amp;T Fiber, five G, and FirstNet. Just a little bit of information, AT&amp;T has invested more than a hundred and forty billion dollars in American infrastructure over the past five years, and a little bit of what we've invested in the city of Longdale is provided in the handout that I provided in the agenda packet. But we're eager to continue working with our state and local governments to keep even more Americans connected. Locally, AT&amp;T has invested more than one point two million dollars in its wired and wireless networks in Longdale from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. In the last few years, we've made a few upgrades within the city, including new cell sites, strengthening wireless and wired network capacity, and new broadband, broadband network connections. And if there's an area of opportunity within the city to further strengthen our network, I'd like to know about that as well. My goal today is simply just to establish a relationship with the city of Longdale as we continue to strengthen and modernize our network and in the area where we serve our customers, as well as to serve as the point of contact for anything related to AT&amp;T or to answer questions. Part of that relationship includes addressing constituent concerns related to our services for timely resolution and to serve as your point of contact. I am responsible also for spreading awareness to our FirstNet services, which I mentioned just a little while ago, where we provide wireless and radio services to first responders, including law enforcement, city departments, transit centers, and schools, that is especially reliable in times of crisis and natural disasters. As I know at this time, the city doesn't have, we don't have any presence with FirstNet, and would like the opportunity to set up, to talk about opportunities to strengthen the first responder network. And then finally, I'm here to talk about AT&amp;T's application for carrier of last resort relief and the recent notices that went out to customers. The first notice was in February. It was a little bit confusing, I will admit. It included messaging that may have alarmed our customers. The most recent letter that was sent out was last month, and that one was targeted specifically to our copper telephone customers, which was hopefully to clear the air a little bit. But in short, we're not taking anything away from our customers. We are not taking away phones out of the home. We are modernizing our network to a faster, more reliable service, which is fiber, and that meets the needs and demands of our customers. The utilization of the copper network has dropped from over thirteen million dollars, thirteen million dollars, but thirteen million customers in early, in the early two thousands to less than a million this year, which doesn't justify the extensive cost to maintain that network as we continue to have more movement towards our fiber and we continue to build it out. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on this matter or any others, and that's my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I want to first say, welcome to Longdale. I'm glad to have a representative from AT&amp;T, some of the other carriers, not necessarily utilities, just say not necessarily phone services or what have you. We do know their reps by, by name and have their phone numbers or whatever, so I'm glad that we do have a representative on the ground that we can call directly. And we do get those notices, what have you, when there, there're gonna be some changes or what have you. Sometimes they are a little kind of challenging to figure out, okay, what does that really mean?
Yes.
Whatever. So it's really good that you're here tonight, and so we'll be able to establish that contact and we'll be able to contact you directly should we have any, any concerns or just clarifications or whatever. So I just want to thank you for your presence tonight. Let's see if there's any comments.
Hi, do you have one?
Yes, sir.
So, the landlines are there to stay. You're not taking them away, correct?
So, we don't like to use the word landlines.
Uh-oh.
But our copper network, there's not a, okay. It's very difficult to say are they going away. If they are not being utilized, then there is a process in which we are moving towards transitioning them to fiber. So if there are people that are actively utilizing the network, we can't necessarily take that away.
So you, when you say utilizing, is that an everyday occurrence, calling on the phone or once a month? Because a lot of seniors don't have iPhones and they still depend on their landline? And I guess on the news media's day, all of two, four, seven, they're all saying that people are up in arms because you're taking away their landlines.
So the challenge is that the media took something and went way over here. So the, what people may or may not even know is that their home phones may already be voiceover IP, which looks and feels like a copper network telephone, and they didn't realize that they were already having this. So I've had people who've come to public participation hearings, and we'll look up their account, and they're already on our voiceover IP service. And so that part, understanding the difference and the, and the language is important. And that's why we don't necessarily like to use the word landline, but we're not taking away home phones specifically. It might be modernized how we provide the service.
So you say that's already copper. Were they notified or how would they know? Because I had a landline for, well, as old as Robert, a hundred years ago, and we still utilize it. And I, I don't know if it's been updated. How would you know?
So of course, we would get in contact with the customer. There's, so, for the Kohler application, which is carrier of last resort application, that's the first part that goes with the California Public Utilities Commission, to say that we no longer want to be required to provide a copper telephone service in, in our service territory. It doesn't mean that once that application is approved or goes through, that then we can just start taking away copper. Mind you, we have several lots of criminals that are doing that for us, especially within the city of Los Angeles. I've got twenty-three instances where I'm dealing with the city attorney, where they are taking away our copper, and it's very difficult to replace because the people that were servicing or providing that copper don't exist or have transitioned to other things. So what I'm saying is that it's a, it's a multi-year process, and we've done this Kohler application in twenty other states. And let's say ten years ago, we did it in Oklahoma. It is just this year, after FCC studies and map surveys and utilization surveys, have we now been able to decommission a copper network. It is a process that is very lengthy and time-consuming, but the first step is just this application.
So they'll still be able to keep their home phones, but just be updated, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No customer will be left behind.
So now, so now, I'm clear on that now. So grandmother, we still have her phone, home phone.
And the number.
Whether it's copper or fiber.
Yeah.
She'd be able to pick up the phone in the house that's plugged into the wall, right?
Except that it will be changed from the wall to the modem.
Oh, and the modem's gonna be plugged into somewhere or it's gonna be over the network? I mean wifi.
I don't necessar, sure. It's coming through your, because it's not, it's not in the air, so your, your modem is, is plugged into fiber. So everything's wired. There's, your phone, home phone at that point wouldn't be wireless, because then that'd be your cellphone. And that's where the confusion is. We're just saying, take it out of the wall and move it into your modem. That's it. It'll still ring, you'll still hear the beep, 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 beep. All the things you love about your home phone will be the same.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
That being said, again, going back to our seniors, a lot of them keep their landlines because it's our understanding that in the emergency situation, when they call nine one one, they can be pinged and know where they're at if they can't tell you where they're at. Does that change anything on the emergency, or will that system still give that senior the peace of mind of knowing that, hey, if I pick up my call, my phone and dial nine one one, that they're going to be able to know where I am, unlike a cellphone?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question. That will not change at all. So FCC requires that if you're going to provide a telephone service, that that public safety piece of having a geographic pinpoint is, remains the same.
Thank you.
Okay. Cuevas?
My, my question is, fiber does go down. Your copper doesn't go down as often as fiber. So if we need to call nine one one from our home phone and fiber's down, is there a guarantee or how do, how did we go about it? Because on a major earthquake, your fiber might be down for months where your copper line might not.
Thank you for the question. I have not known fiber to go out for months, but copper also goes down, and it burns. That's another thing I hear about is with fires, is that it burns. So there is a reliance, one of the, I guess, blessings of fiber is that it's actively being produced. There are multiple suppliers. So if it does go down, we can replace it a lot faster than we could copper. But I would say that nothing is necessarily perfect, which is why it's nice to have a backup to your backup plan, and that's where the cellphone piece comes in. And I understand that people are resistant. I have an eighty-six-year-old grandmother who doesn't want to have a cellphone, and then she fell, and now she keeps one on her at all times because she understands the necessity of having it. But I can understand the, okay, it could go down, and then what happens? But there, it's a lot faster and easier to replace and update than I would say copper.
Yeah, we, we all have a lot of the eighty-six plus, so that's our worry, that they hear certain things, and, I mean, now everybody, most everybody has a cellphone, but they still feel comfortable having that home line, knowing that it plugs to the wall and not to a box.
I understand.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, it will be a while before anything changes or before we need to try and just transition anyone permanently. If they want to keep it, they can keep it, because again, it's a lengthy process that the FCC does to ensure that people are not utilizing the network, that there is an alternative or multiple alternatives in place. And they'll find, they save more money if they get off of the copper network.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
No questions, just a comment. I wanted to thank you, Mackenzie, for coming out. We bumped into each other at an event. She wanted to brief me on it, and I thought that would be a great opportunity, like the mayor said, that we haven't always had a representative that actually comes to the meetings and gives us updates. So very happy that you made it out, and it sounds like it was a very popular topic. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to be here. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Appreciate that presentation. Yes, ma'am. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna move, starting objection, item seventeen up. We got a few young folks here probably need to get home to do homework soon.
I know, I'm laughing at you. Like they're not doing homework. It's getting closer, Greg. Right.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Yes, we're here for item number seventeen, Youth Advisory Committee Appointments. The Youth Advisory Committee has been defunct since- Youth, the youth advisory committee has been, uh, defunct since, uh, March of two thousand twenty. It was disbanded due to the international health crisis. Uh, on the rebound after the international health crisis, we've been trying to get enough applications to form the committee for about, probably about sixteen or eighteen months, and it's been tough. Even the folks on the prior committee couldn't come back because of sports commitments, uh, school commitments, after-school stuff and stuff like that. So under normal circumstances, the youth advisory committee that would have been appointed in two thousand twenty-two, their terms would end this coming September thirtieth. So there's a couple of things we need to under, uh, need to take care of, I think, instead of besides just appointing. So my suggestion is that we try to get the committee going as soon as possible for a couple of reasons. Uh, this committee typically has not met during the summer months, typically July, August and September, because the kids typically have wanted to enjoy their summers and we got a lot of no quorums and things like that. So we just, uh, years ago started saying we won't meet during the summer and let the kids enjoy their vacation. Then on the flip side of it, September is a very busy month for these kids. They need to get, they need to probably have to be in, in school for probably about a month or so or even more to six weeks to get settled. So they don't have to deal with homework and all the pressures of coming to a, a, a committee meeting when they may have a, a plenty of schoolwork to do, sports practices or whatever. So typically that commission would, uh, again, the two thousand twenty version would have, uh, termed out this coming September. So if we want to get the committee going right away, what I would suggest, this is what staff is recommending, and you'll see in the, uh, recommendation, is that we have a kickoff meeting after the, the kids are appointed tonight. We'll have a kickoff meeting in June. Let the, the members of the committee decide whether they want to meet during July and August. Our first meeting could be, uh, should be in June. Decide if they want to meet in August or July, August and September. And if we have enough interest and we can make it go, fine. Let the children decide whether they want to enjoy their summers and not have to deal with it, uh, or to come and meet during the summer. So we can make that decision at the staff level. The flip side would be to appoint tonight, and this is not staff's recommendation, as you'll know, is to appoint tonight and then wait around until October to start. That's probably not the best thing to do. So one of the things in the recommendation we'll be doing is asking you folks to extend the term another five months. So instead of a two-year term, twenty-four, uh, month term from October two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, move it up and we can, uh, expand that term starting in June. And whether they meet during June or not, we'll have a committee that's appointed for an extra five months. To stay true to policy, we'd either have to have a really short, uh, five-month, uh, five-month term or we'd have to extend it and let the, the, these, uh, young folks be with us until, uh, September two thousand twenty-six. And I think they'll all be with us. But, uh, looking at the roster, I don't see any seniors or juniors. I see a lot of underclass folks, uh, sophomores, freshmen and even some middle school folks. So that's kind of the history and where we're looking to go with that. So we do have, we have, uh, uh, we'll, we'll clarify with council or confirm with council that we do have seven applicants. We originally got nine. We had two that were disqualified because of, uh, place of residence. And, uh, I believe we have four of them or five of them here today?
We have four of them here today.
And the mayor would like you guys to come on up, so if you guys could come on up real quickly.
No, she, she's, uh, sister. Okay, she's here to support.
Mayor, would you like them, like them to say hello?
Yeah, just say hello. Give us your name, what's, I know what school you, say your ladies go to.
Hi, everyone. My name is Orelli Rodriguez and I'm a sophomore.
What school?
I go to New Road School in Santa Monica.
All right.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brianna Millicore and I'm a sophomore and I go to Longdale High School.
Cardinals.
Hi, everyone. My name is Isabella Meza and I'm a sophomore at Longdale High School.
To a Cardinals.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Sadiya Patel and I am also another sophomore at Longdale High School.
Yay!
First losinger now.
Uh, right there.
We didn't have a youth committee when you guys went to losing.
Mayor, did you have any questions?
No, I do. I want to thank you, uh, you ladies for applying as well as the, the others that could not make it tonight. We have a lot of exciting things to do, um, with this committee. And the committee is basically yours. We're gonna give you the, the blueprint on what we'd like you guys to do, what have you. But we want to hear from you, from the, the committee itself, right? So you guys have an opportunity to, to actually shape the committee as you see things in the community that, that you would like for the committee, uh, to get involved with. That's what you're there for. Uh, and you're here to give us advice so that, so that, we, we're a little older, let's put it that way. Except for this one over here. So this one over here, we're a little, we're a little older, so we may not, we, yeah. We may not have a pulse on, you know, what all the youth, um, um, need in our city. And that's what really the mission of the youth committee, um, advisory committee, um, is di- designed for. Give you an example, um, two, um, projects that's gonna come before the city is our Arts in Public Places program. Well, we're gonna be doing some, um, painting of some of the utility boxes, right? And so we want it to look like it's a young, vibrant community, right? Um, so and that's, your help could be, uh, employed there as well. And something that's really exciting to me is our, our youth development center that we're, we're building, a brand-new youth development center. Uh, we would like your help as well on, um, your advice on the programming. What should we have in the youth, uh, development center besides recreational? So I want you to think big. I don't, I want you to think professional development and skills, um, development. And so that's what we're gonna, um, reach it out, um, to the committee to, for your advice. Is that all right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you. And with that, I think what, we need to do two things. Let's, let's first, um, entertain a motion that we ratified the mayor's appointees.
Second.
All right, we, we all agree.
So the motion's been made that we approve, uh, the mayor's appointees to the youth advisory committee, by Curry and second by Hoffman-Gorman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing done with the council, please vote.
For item number seventeen, the motion passes unanimously.
All right. Congratulations. Yes. And so you want to hear, is that, do we have to decide that now? I know he mentioned about Mitch, uh, meeting immediately or, or waiting.
Yeah, we're, uh, typically youth advisory meets the second.
Let's hear from, um, Quavis.
Yeah.
If, if no one has any objection, I would like to go ahead and do item number one, start in May.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay, without any objection, they can start, they can start in May. All right, that'd be the order.
We don't have to vote?
No, we don't have to.
Just a heads up, I believe, for the city, for the seven young ladies and men went to Longdale High School. No losinger. Go Cardinals. Go Cardinals.
Okay, there we go. So let's go back to our agenda and let's pick it up at oral communications. Oh, and by the way, to our, um, youth advisory committee, feel free to stay at this council meeting as long as you would like. We won't feel, we won't, don't feel bad if you have to leave. So, so feel free to leave it at, at any time.
One of the young lady has a question.
No, you can just leave it at, at any time you, you would like. All right. All right, let's see. Let's have our oral communication. Any interested in oral communications, you may do so at this time. If you have any oral communications for the Longdale City Council, the Longdale Successor Agency or the Longdale Housing Authority, you may do so at this time. When it becomes your turn, if you come to the podium, if you would start with your name first, at about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Now, you don't have to wait till your name be, uh, mentioned. Just simply approach the podium after the person before you has concluded. Let's have our first speaker. Ray?
I am Ray Haller, homeowner in southwest Longdale and a proud Losinger High School graduate. And I'm also happy to see Longdale High School students here. It's very important. And thanks for staying for my speech. Okay, I've got a lot to talk about. As a former Neighborhood Watch block captain, I look forward to seeing the program renewed. Secondly, uh, thank you so much for the graffiti cover-up program. Uh, they, you do a soup, they do a super job. There's a gentleman named Albert covering up a bunch of stuff along the road between one-seventieth and Artesia. There was a whole lot of stuff like about two weeks ago. He, and I said, I'll put in a good word for him, and there it is. Uh, I went to the youth day, uh, event. Uh, must, must be tremendous work to pull that off. It seemed like it went very well and thank you so much to all the staff and everyone to, for, for doing that. And I enjoyed myself, uh, surprisingly. So, uh, and now it's time to talk about the sea line, green line. I saw city manager, Sean Moore, last month at Metro and Union Station. Uh, always good to see a fellow Longdani, uh, Longdani, especially the city manager. It gets lonely down there where I've become notorious. So, uh, during speeches to Metro, uh, I've been referring to the letter from Longdale to Metro in response to the draft EIR over a year ago. Uh, so that was, has been helpful to me. Thank you and I hope to the city. Uh, thank you for sponsoring the bus to go to Metro, uh, May twenty-third for the Board of Directors meeting where the decision on which train path to build will be made. This change, this change will affect Longdale forever and it's not too late to speak now in person, by phone, by email, preferably all of the above. Lastly, I understand there was, oh, and there are some, uh, cards with information back there. I put, uh, some of them back there has information about that, but I'm sure it's on the, uh, Longdale website. Lastly, um, I understand there was a meeting of the local, uh, mayors last month. So I'm very interested about whatever comments, uh, there were about the sea line, uh, green line at that mayor's meeting. Uh, and lastly, I guess that's pretty much, I was, I was stalking the, uh, AT&amp;T representative here for some side business. So I ought to come here more often. I'm sorry I haven't been here more cause it seems like always good things happen when I come here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, City Manager, City Attorney and Staff.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Matthew Harbison. I'm here on behalf of the Longdale Wesleyan Church. Uh, letting you know that on Thursday, we'll be having our, uh, meeting of the Hawthorne Longdale Ministerial Association. And, uh, last time it was in Longdale. Uh, this next time it will be at the Sentinel Bible Church in Hawthorne, four-four-seven-five West one-thirty-seventh Street. Uh, seven AM, we get together for, uh, any prayer requests you may have. And eight AM, we have a little meeting. So you are invited as council members to the Sentinel Bible Church, uh, seven AM if you choose or eight AM. And if you aren't able to make it, but just want to shout a hi, I can make sure I pass that out to them as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say hi to the AT&amp;T lady. I wish things were a little cheaper with AT&amp;T, but, uh, I have a bundle and I still have my parents' landline. And I remember when the phone number started with OS.
Or FR.
And I have their phone number still since nineteen fifty-eight. So I brought, I kept their phone number just because. Anyway, I'm here on behalf of a neighbor who works graveyard, so he cannot attend. And, um, I don't know if this is telephone lines or not, and I'll leave this picture with you guys. When our trash truck, cause we live in the cul-de-sac, our trash trucks come in, they have a very, very tight area with lines seem to be hanging much lower because there's so many of them. And as we had the bulk pickup, that is a totally new truck that came in that does, it's not familiar with our block at all. So very close when they were taking the other Big Ben to lift it. And they, even our guys, but they know our, their route and their blo- our block. They come so close to hitting these and I don't know, we don't know who to go to to ask people either to tighten them up or get them higher or something for our trash people. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you could check that out.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Andrew Blackney, uh, resident of Longdale. I, um, have two things I just want to talk about. First thing was, um, I really would like to urge the city, whenever the South Bay Cog does come out with their recommendations for their slow speed travel network, I believe is what it's called, I'd urge the city to take, um, to look into that. I recently had a, um, very fun experience of traveling from here, um, all the way down to Long Beach, to downtown Long Beach by bike. And it is currently not a very fun experience at all. Um, uh, multiple stop and start bike lanes, including one that let me go into an uphill where the bike lane ended to a freeway on-ramp. So, um, I just would really like to urge you guys to take that into consideration when that does come up. And I also, um, would like to talk to, point your attention to an item that is on the agenda today for the, um, put, uh, installation of crosswalks on one-forty-seventh between Hawthorne and Prairie. I'd like to urge you guys to approve that. It would definitely improve the safety on that street. And it's very important to me because I was almost killed on that street about two years ago. Uh, so I just would like to urge you to approve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're gonna close public comments. Thank everyone who provided comments. Let's hear from the council. Let's hear from Quavis.
We didn't hear from the library, did we?
No, she didn't.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Um, who could check the cables that are hanging in the cul-de-sac?
Mayor, council, I'll have, uh, Public Works, uh, contact Republic and we'll, we'll look into that.
Could we also put something on our side, website or somewhere? Because it's not only their cul-de-sac, it's throughout the city. We have cables that are going through our houses into our neighbor's house. But we don't know if they're, you know, electrical, if they're telephone. Um, somewhere where our residents could reach out so that they could be, uh, given the proper information.
Mayor, council, we'll look into putting something on the website and the socials for that.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone that came out and talked, um, this evening. Ray, if there's room on the bus, I'm going to be on that bus come May twenty-third. And if there's not room, I will drive myself down. But I will be there with you on the twenty-third at that, uh, because I believe it's going to be the day that something is going to occur. Matthew, sorry I can't make it again on Thursdays. Thursdays is a heavy workday for me. Please send my regards. I would love to be there if I, if I had the opportunity. And Dina, I agree, those things, those lines we ought to take a look at. So I second what my partner over here said. And with that, I'll pass it to the guy on my right.
Hey, I just want to thank everybody that came out and spoke tonight. Uh, Ray from Losinger, that's your new name, Ray from Losinger. I'll see you tomorrow night at Neighborhood Watch meeting. I'm gonna have a name back to say Ray from Losinger. I'll put mine and say Pat from Longdale. And, uh, I guess we're gonna talk later on about the crosswalks, so I'll pass it on to my mayor pro temp.
Just like to thank everybody that came out. Um, to further talk about the, the hanging lines, um, when we do find out who's responsible for them, perhaps we can set up a meeting with that agency cause there does seem to be a proliferation of those, um, around the city. And then, uh, the local travel network, if I'm not mistaken, that's coming to our next meeting, right? City manager, the, uh, local travel network with the cog, that'll be the next agenda, I believe.
Yes, that's correct. Staff's, uh, uh, letting me know, yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. So we're gonna be hearing them. And with that, I'll pass along. Thank you.
I too want to thank, I too. Want to thank those who came and spoke tonight. Um, Ray, you mentioned, um, Albert was doing some graffiti removal. Um, I ran into, well, he's actually in the community all the time, but I saw him out in the community as I was doing my walk, um, Sunday, and he was hard at work, not only on the street that you mentioned, but also on, on Artesia at the bus stop. Erasing some of the graffiti there at the bus stop. So he does a, a great job. I took a moment to, um, thank him for the hard work that he was putting in, um, on the Sundays. But thank you for recognizing it, uh, Ray. Also, um, Dana, Dana, thank you also for the trash bins. Yeah, for some reason, they also have, not just in our city, uh, cities and other cities where they, it looks like they have too much wire and they, they wrap it up and you see these loops. Yeah, it seemed like maybe at some point they was mean to come back out and pull them out or something or stretch them out or something, but never get around to doing it. And so I don't know if that's a, a, a thing. Why is that the case? But that's like everywhere for some reason. Um, um, but we will take a look at that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And, um, Andrew, yes, we will consider the, the South Bay, um, um, cogs, um, slow speed, um, travel network, um, when they're, become available. And that's kind of, it's not funny, but that's kind of strange when you say one of the routes led you to, to, to get on the freeway. So, um, I hope you merge safely, right?
It's hard getting up to speed.
Right, right. But we will take a look at that. Thank you for, uh, bringing that to our attention and for staying on this issue for us. Thank you so much. Right, but we will take a look at that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and for staying on this issue for us. Thank you so much. So with that, I will close the public comments and comments from the diocese. And let's move the agenda to our consent calendar, item three through 14. Yeah, which includes the successful agency in the housing authority items. What is the?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
So the motion's been made by Quavis that we approve the consent calendar. Currie has seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing as the council please vote on the consent calendar. Okay.
There it is, now potted. Okay. For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda, item 15. Budget workshop fiscal year 2024-25.
Yes, hi, Mayor and council members. Thank you. So we have the budget workshop for fiscal '24-25. And I'm going to just jump into looking at revenues. So this is just a quick chart of total general fund revenues citywide. You'll see the biggest section is taxes, which make up 83%, followed by use of money, 6%, community development, 4%, licensing permits, and current track of fines, 3%. That just gives you just a general overview of where the revenues are coming from. Obviously, the biggest section is taxes. All right, so this shows a breakdown of the general fund revenues. We got taxes, 16 million last year, and we're looking at about 17.4 million this year. In total, you'll see at the bottom, total general fund revenues last year was at 19 and a half million. This year, for '24-25, we're projecting 21 million, increase of about 1.5 million. A couple of the biggest items going up is, again, in the taxes category of a little over a million dollars. Most of that's coming from property taxes. You know, just the standard 2% increase year over year, which is coming out to about 120,000. Sales tax, including the Measure L, both of those combined. You know, HDL gave us a forecast of about 2% for fiscal '24-25, which is, it's getting back to normal, so that's okay. It's a good increase considering where we've been, and we've had a few slow quarters recently, but they're projecting to come back up to that 2% for next year. So those, both of those combined are adding about 160,000 to the revenue numbers. Also, there's some increases in TOT taxes. Revenues here have been doing really well, especially this year, we're exceeding budget. And so for the coming up year, our budget is 810,000 compared to 650,000 from last year. Just in general, we're seeing this increasing, and that's the trend that seems to be going forward. Also, HDL forecast kind of validates that as well, and their details, if you look at the different categories they provided us, so these numbers do make sense to us, and so that's why we do have the increased revenues coming up. And finally, motor vehicle in Lou, we're seeing an increase of about 400,000. This is again tied to property taxes. So that all goes hand in hand with the 2% annual increases. So in total, it's the 1.5 million general fund revenues we're seeing projected increase. Next, we have this chart, which just kind of shows your general fund expenditures, broken down by operations, personnel, and capital. Operations is your biggest portion, 68%, followed by personnel, which is your salaries basically, and benefits, 30%, and then capital of 2%. We'll jump into personnel costs. All right, so total personnel costs, last year we had a budget of 5.1 million, and this is broken down, you can see, by the different departments in the city. And this year, we're looking at about 6 million, increase of 835,000 in total. And we'll get into the different areas, but you can see most of them are increasing. There's a couple small, there's one small decrease, but again, we have increases, 835,000 for personnel costs. And kind of the detail or the reasons behind this, we did just have the recent salary MOU discussions with the AFSMI and the CMT employees. Both salaries and benefits were negotiated, so a big piece of increases are due to those renegotiated MOUs. The second one we have is just to kind of, in cable TV, now there is a full-time supervisor and also an additional part-time. So they have a full-time supervisor and two part-timers working there, and I think it's staffed at what it should be now, and so some increased cost there. Municipal services is looking at hiring a emergency preparedness officer, so there'll be increase for that. It's a part-time position. And then community services. So the budget I have, and this is kind of the biggest piece, and discussion and input I think we'll need from council is this discussion of opening up the center for reservations. The way I have it budgeted and talking with Mike was at 75%, meaning reservations starting in September and going through June. So nine months out of the year, giving us 75%. He'll need an additional seven part-time staff for that. So the increase that's in there, that's about 180,000 for community service, is for the, basically the seven part-time employees that will be needed to run it at 75%, meaning from September through June, the nine months of the year. He also gave us 50%, which obviously would reduce the cost because he wouldn't need to hire until January 1st through June 30th, so that's half of the year. It'd be obviously less cost, but I wanted to show what the full cost starting in September would be. We discussed this with the budget subcommittee as well, and their recommendation was basically start with four part-time staff right now and see how that goes, and then we could increase as needed. So I think we'll need some sort of discussion and consensus on that to see where to come up with the budget at. And then the final one in here is for community development, they'll be adding an associate planner this year. I think this was already budgeted for in mid-year. I believe there are recruitment's going on, but we put the full year salary in the '24-25 budget. So before moving on to operating costs, any questions on the personnel side, I guess? Am I okay to kind of move on to operation costs?
I do, really quick. The budget includes the seven staff members?
Yes.
Even if we start with four?
The budget right now, I put in seven part-time staff, yes. To show what the full cost would be, and we can obviously reduce that if we need to.
So we start, so we allocate for the seven, but we start with the four, and if we, as we increase to the seven, we don't need an additional allocation because it would already be allocated.
Yes. I mean, if that's what council decides to do for the seven, yeah, seven is in there right now, just to show what that cost would be. But obviously, if you start with four, it'd be less than that, but we'll have the allocation in there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And Bernard and I was at the meeting. They're hiring, Mike's short timer, he's leaving at the end of the month, we hired a new director. And I believe one of his discussions was hiring a new coordinator. So that's why we put off till September, because I don't know, I really don't believe we're going to get people to work here for $16 an hour. Our base pay is 16, 16 and change.
Yes.
That's correct, Mayor Council.
Yes.
And so they go to McDonald's, Burger King, In-N-Out to make $20 an hour. So that's why the subcommittee said, we'll start off with four and see how we do. And that's why we prolonged the opening till September, correct, Bernard?
Yeah, we, we wanted to be realistic about that component, the hiring part of it. Because we felt with the recent increases in the restaurant salaries, and this is only part-time, we didn't know. So we kind of wanted to see how that part went, but we want to get it up full and running.
Yeah, I agree. That's going to be kind of challenging, 16, when you could go to other places, 20.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be kind of challenging right there.
That's why we spread your heads, that's what the.
What else you got? You had something else on there? You had something else you wanted to add?
No, no, that's it.
You're good? All right. Next, we have general fund operation costs, broken down by department. Last year, we had about 13, a little over 13 million budgeted, and this year, we're proposing 13 and a half million, total increase of 465,000. I'll leave it there, and I'll go through some of the main notes I have. Some of the main increases for this 465,000 by department, our city council had about a 19,000 increase. This is made up of planning for state of the city event and oath of office event. And also a new legal cities, mayors, and city member academy was added for two attendees. So that's kind of the increases there. City clerks, you'll see there's about a 90,000 increase. There's going to be the general election coming up in November, so this is basically, the county gave us a $97,000 cost estimate for running that election. So that's the big piece of the increase there. And then looking at general operations had a pretty large increase. This is due to JPIA increased insurance costs, about 150,000 increase compared to last year. And then also purse costs have increased by a little over 100,000. Purse has not been doing well on their returns, so that's why when they don't do well, it comes down to the city. So increase of about 100,000 there. And then moving to public safety. I don't have their final numbers yet, but it's around 3% increase, which is going to be about 250,000. Waiting on their final letter with, you know, what each deputy cost will be to figure that out and the liability. But for right now, we have a rough number of about 3%, so about 250,000 increase there. And then Public Works Grounds is, there's increase there. And this was discussed in, I think, the last meeting or a couple meetings ago from Ahmad. They need some sort of HVAC technician and be a contract service to kind of oversee the community center HVAC unit. And that's basically, my understanding is, just to make sure it's running efficiently and operating so that there's no surprises or breakdowns or anything like that. And I guess, again, before I move on, any questions on the operating costs?
All right, I, I have a bunch of tabs, but I don't know where they're falling. But why is the election so expensive? I mean, we're a city that has less, a low count of voters.
I would, I don't know.
Mayor, council, that I talked to the city clerk's office, and so the reason is the general election, it's an estimated cost, and it may be lower, it may be higher depending on turnout.
Because we don't even have a, two places to vote. We only have one place that our residents go and vote.
But that, that's the, go ahead.
I was going to say, a lot of the cost comes in printing and comes in the tabulation. It's not so much the running of a center. Those costs are minimal based on what they pay the, the people who work there. Part of it is the cost to translate ballot documents into multiple languages. If you have more than one translation, the costs go up, and we do have more than one translation in this city. So the costs county-wide are definitely going up for elections, and it's, it's something that is on every small city's mind.
Is this also when they send your ballots in the mail and it goes to someone that doesn't live at that property? Because that's something that they need to, I mean, if they send it to the wrong property, the city shouldn't be paying for something they didn't check. I'm sorry, but it's probably off topic, but.
If I may provide additional information, it's also based on the number of candidates that are going to run, and it's a little hard to predict that. So we went with a higher number, just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
But, yes.
Thank you. I also have a question about contract under finance.
Yes.
It's 105,990 over.
Yeah, so currently, the accounting manager position is open. It is a funded position, so the funding is there for that. However, that contract services is for our part-time to cover for that position, so that's why you'll see the increase there. The salary savings pretty much will cover the cost of that increased contract.
I have probably one more. And we don't know why the sheriff department is so high. It's 207,000 dollars increase. That's.
Yeah, so.
What are we getting for that? The same services, or are we?
That's at the same, yes.
Stays the same. They're not taking anything away, or?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Mayor, council, I went, I attended the sheriff's meeting, the city manager's meeting. They mentioned, you know, costs are going up for the sheriffs. For the county, it covers their costs, all their operational costs, but also please note, the liability trust fund costs are going up as well, and we didn't get a hard number on that yet. It's 1.9 to 3.5. We don't know what that's going to be yet.
And I guess this should have been on the previous one, but the salaries under Public Works went down 16,749, under 501.100.
That's really due to some of the allocations in there. And one of the positions was reclassified to another department.
So it was reclassified?
Yes. That's basically to cover the, we used to have the trash consultant, so the reclasses because of that, and the salaries were transferred to a different department.
And also, there's another one that dropped 19,000.
Yeah, there are some reclasses within the Public Works Department that happened.
Give me two seconds, two, two more seconds. Under Public Works Engineering, we increased 4,000 dollar subscriptions and publications. It's a five, page 61 on, on the budget.
That's right, it was, I went to 4,000 for publications. Went from 1,000 to 5,000, I believe.
Yes. I don't know if this is the time to go through my tabs, but, you know.
I can find out what that is and let you know. I don't have the details of exactly what the increases are.
Normally, you guys will put, you know, thousand dollars for this, thousand dollars for that.
It's not in there. We can find out and clarify that.
Page 67, I like it. Contract services went down 355,000 dollars, but I want to know.
That's really community development, that's really for completion of the general plan?
So that's the reason why it dropped?
Yes.
And I think my last one is. No, never mind. The other one was that thank you for bringing up back the community center.
So you're going to check on the 41,000 dollar increase?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Publications and that?
Yes, we'll take a look what that is.
Well, maybe the interns, Public Works clerk can answer that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I believe that has to do with different seminars and training opportunities for, for the two engineers, as well as the staff that is handling the solid waste. I think Public Works is at the, at a turning point where the two engineers are, you know, experienced enough, you know, to be able to handle their job easier, and so I think that's the makeup of that. But we can, we can get the exact details and get back to the city council.
So is it classified in the wrong department, wrong line item? Because this is publications?
No, it should.
It says publications.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I think it also should cover the, the seminars, but we can verify that.
That should be a different line, line item, right?
Yeah, if it's seminars, it'd be a different line, but I think we'll take a look at it and see what is in, clear it out.
I'm good with the training, but if it's a publication, which is a piece of paper that I could read at, you know.
Yeah, no, it's, the publications, I think, those are also online stuff, you know, there's no more magazines or papers, you know, like the old times, you know, but we can verify what the makeup of that is, sure.
Sorry, guys.
Okay.
They clarified what, what falls under publications, if training and all those things are under publications, or if they're a separate item. Any other questions on this side?
I'm good, thank you.
Anything else? We're good to move on?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, the next one, that's the details. Just to kind of highlight community events. These are the community events, most of them all the same. I do think there's some slight increases, that's really just increased costs along with everything else, costs have been going up. And then the very last line item on there you'll see is the youth and government day. We haven't had that for several years, and it was proposed by the subcommittee to bring that back, so we've budgeted three thousand for that. Also, there's kind of questions against around the blues festival, music festival, both of them are budgeted, but only the blues was done this last year, but they're both budgeted for in there right now.
What can you tell me about the, the public safety outreach? What does that consist of?
Mr. Mayor, I can address that.
Yes.
Again, Mr. Mayor, that is going to be for coffee with cop events. Yeah.
All right, thank you for that clarification. So on the youth and government day, have the schools indicated that, that they are doing the youth and government day? It's really their program that plugs into, of course, the city.
Mayor Council, we're gonna, we're gonna look into that, but we went on the subcommittee's recommendation. We're definitely going to reach out to the schools and re, instead, try to reconstitute that program. I actually participated in it, and it was really fun, and I miss it.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed your certificate on the wall. Thank you, that's a good recommendation.
And perhaps you can involve the YAC.
Yes.
To possibly help.
The outreach.
Set that up, the outreach and whatnot.
That would make sense.
Yeah, and then I did have one other comment I wanted to make, because I, I always ask it every year about getting donations for sponsors for the events. And it's due to staff capacity, they're limited, so if we wanted to, I think it was okay, reach out for donations, we can, I believe.
Yes, you can. There are rules under the Political Reform Act regarding behested payments, which is if one of you gets a really significant donation, but we will work those out because that is not a reason to not seek them. That's just a matter of filing some paperwork if we need to. But if any of you are able to get that kind of significant donation, it would be great for the events. So I will help that, make that work.
Go through your logics.
Some cities, I can think of one in particular, they actually have, it's not a foundation, but it's a, for, for the lack of a better word, it's a nonprofit, right? They raise the money for sponsorships, for community events, or what have you. And then that way, people are making their donations to the city specifically for those events, or what have you. So some cities do, do that, and it's totally, totally separate. And it makes, it makes them feel more at ease because they know that they're, they're making the donation to the city as opposed to, yeah, I'm giving a donation, but you say it's going to be used for this purpose, but it looks more official, if you will, you know, when, when they go through the nonprofit that the city set, set up. And sometimes it's not even a nonprofit in terms of like, you know, with a board of directors and stuff like that, it's an account, you know, a set aside account. That's good.
I just wanted to make that note.
Any other questions? We're good? All right. So next, we have, I just want to kind of go over some unknown potential costs or changes in the budget that could happen. The first one is the possible litigation with the metro, that's been there since last year, I just left it on there, it's, you know, just to bring it to your attention. And then also, I think we're going to go back into negotiations for the NYU contract in the next few months or so. So that's on there as well. And then also, just want to point out, you know, we are in a high interest rate economy right now. Our investments are doing really well right now, we're projecting about one point seven million in interest to be collected this year, or the upcoming year. But just to kind of let you guys know, any cuts by the Federal Reserve would have an impact to that. So far, there have not been any cuts. They're still saying inflation is too high. So there's really no cuts yet, but they're saying there could be a possibility, but that's all kind of in the air. To kind of help combat that, I've been looking at, you know, investing longer term to try and lock in some of those rates. But, you know, those have been difficult to come by, but still, I try to get out three to five years, which is the maximum. But a big piece of our money is in life, which is considered a short-term investment, just a more liquid and safety, I guess. But just, that's just kind of out there, but I don't think there'll be really any major changes this year, but it could happen, it's a possibility. And then finally, sales tax revenues, again, you know, everything is looking good right now, they're projecting two percent increase. Economy is going strong right now, so if there's any changes to that, that would be impacted as well. Just to kind of give you some items of, hey, these things are out there, it could happen, so just to have it on your mind. Any questions on that?
So where's your, your summary or your, your narrative concerning the, the budget position? As proposed in terms of like, you know, the healthiness or what have you?
So, I don't have it in here, just because some of these numbers are still preliminary, but as far as in total, looking at revenues, we're projecting revenues of about twenty-one million for general funds, and expenditures are looking at about nineteen and a half million. So we have about, looking like about a million, million and a half of a surplus for the general fund revenue. So it's looking healthy right now. There could be a few changes. There will be, we do have a final step of going through some of the CIP budgets, so that will be finalized in the coming weeks. And then also, there'll be some salary allocations, we really won't change the numbers, but it'll just be allocated, possibly need any different allocations. And then also, final numbers from, I guess, the sheriffs, which could have a little bit of an impact there as well. And then we'll also kind of, before we're done, we'll go over our revenue projection, projections again, to make sure that, you know, they all look good. But there could be some minor changes there. But looking at about a million to a million and a half of a surplus for the twenty-four, twenty-five year.
So, uh, thank you for this report and this workshop.
One more slide to get to.
Oh, you got another slide, oh, you got something else to add?
So, just to kind of go over ARPA, there've been a few requests for, and they're built into this budget to purchase some other items. The city clerk is looking at an agenda management software, this was actually approved in the mid-year, I think the cost is about twelve thousand. Public safety, we're looking at getting two radar trailers, some camera repair, a portable awning. Municipal services, they're looking to replace a vehicle, and then the citywide private armed security is also being charged through ARPA funds. And then, public works, remainder of the security improvements. They're also looking at two pickup trucks to replace the current CNG vehicles, which I think are coming up to expiration date. And then a power washer, and the biggest piece is the city hall and public works facility needs. This is in the budget at three million. And then park, hopper park shade equipment, I think that was about twenty thousand for that. So that's kind of what we have for ARPA. I think there's some other items such as like landscaping at the three parks. So that's kind, that's not budgeted for in there, I don't think we have numbers on that yet, but that's still outstanding there. And just a reminder, you know, the ARPA funds need to be obligated by December thirty-one this year, twenty-four, and then spent by December thirty-one of twenty-six. Most of it is, we, we do have quite a big chunk budgeted and spent at this point. Still a little bit to go, I think around a million, million-two is, I think is what we've got left right now. But there are some costs that have not been included yet.
I have a question. Does public work not have a power washer right now?
Mayor Council will answer that, so it's breaking down, it's been in the shop quite often, and it needs to be replaced.
Can we get it before this budget if, I mean, if it's breaking down?
It's working, but, it's working, but it is wearing. It's been in the shop several times, so we wanted to get this through the budget, it'll hold up, I'm told, it'll work to the end. But it's been in and out, so it's been sporadic.
Because we might be spending more money than getting a new one, if it's going in and out to the shop.
It's a good point. We are, we, we can, if the council wants to allocate the expenditure, we can, you know, take it forward and, and, and address it immediately.
I'll leave it up to my colleagues, but if it was up to me, I would just say, instead of spending the money to repair it every so often, buy the new one, if, if we're using the ARPA funds. I mean, it's in the budget for next year, and it's ARPA, so that's just my opinion.
Well, next year starts in July.
Yeah.
Well, it's May, two more months. But if it breaks down in next month, or this month, they're going to take it in for repair again, and that's money that we're going to repair, and then buy a new one in July. That's the way I see it, you know.
I see. I, I take that point, I, I, I got you, I think they can kind of.
Money now, if we could get a new one.
I'll let them make, make the professional decision on how to handle that.
I'll, I'll leave that to the city manager and the acting director, but obviously, now that we've heard that there's at least some interest, if they decide to bring that back sooner, then you'll know why it hit an agenda sooner. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I just add one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not on the list for ARPA, but we are looking into getting a system for permit processing. So I think we're budgeting for that.
Yes, actually, sorry, it should have been ARPA, it's actually within the community development, it's in the general fund right now, but that will be moved over to ARPA, yes.
And I have one that's, that's not on the list that I previously kind of asked about, and that was, like, home improvements, products that, that's purchased in our local realtors here.
Yes.
Including building materials, things of that nature.
Yeah, um, we are looking at that to see what's out there and what we can do. It was just too early for me right now to put numbers together, but I think that will be added going forward.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
What is a portable awning for the Lando Safety Center? Is that for the sheriff department?
For the sheriff's department, yes.
I don't know. I really don't know. I'll buy you umbrellas.
They're increasing us two million dollars. Could we afford a shaving?
I can, mayor council, I can answer the awning. We can't have a permanent structure in the back, so I re, we recommended a movable one, it meets our code, and that way, the, the deputies can work out and use it as a recreational in the back, behind this final service center. Because it gets a lot of sun back there.
I think the subcommittee talked about the two vehicles for public works. There's still time on the expiration. We were going to hold off the new vehicles until we find out what the expiration on the two old ones are. If they go through mid-year, do you have the expiration dates on the two vehicles?
Not, not readily available right now, but I think it is, it is this year, it's coming up in a few months.
My, my understanding, after talking to the supervisor, it's December. Close to December is more of the time.
Okay.
December, January is, I could double check again, but my understanding, one of the trucks is definitely December.
All right, I have a question. How do they expire? They stop working? I'm sorry, this is.
Just like on the dump truck, mayor council? The, the, the tanks are only certified to last for so many years, and to upgrade the tanks to make them recertified, it's very expensive. So we're switching to gas, so we don't have that issue. But yeah, these trucks are coming up, my understanding, one of them for sure is early December, the other one might be a few months off, but I can double check. We'll have that answer for you at the, at the next, when we bring the item back before the council.
And, and we're going to try to sell these trucks?
Yes, we send them to the auction, and then we get whatever the, whatever the cost is, whatever to sell them, and whatever the market value is at that time.
So we can use them, but other cities could? Is that how it works?
I, we don't know what to dispose of them, we cannot use them after a certain point, but maybe someone wants to invest in them and, and do them, or take them to another state.
Okay.
Yeah, so they might include it in another state, but not in California.
That concludes my report. So if any questions, we're than happy to answer, but I think we've gone through quite a bit, but anything else?
Any, any, any other questions? No, I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you for that comprehensive workshop.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to staff, all of you. It was my first budget subcommittee, thank you, Pat. I really enjoyed it, I think we met for about three hours, but we, it was, it was about three hours, but it went really well, so thank you.
I was gonna say ten o'clock, but you said three hours. And no, and no dinner. That'll be, that'll be good. Bernard, you threw it away for a first time.
You made it through.
Yep.
But I didn't eat dinner, so. Very good, good job, subcommittee. Very good job. Thank you, guys, for being on that subcommittee. All right, let's see, what else we have on the agenda?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, I'm getting whispered that we're on sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen.
Okay, and this is a request to relocate, okay. Item number sixteen is request to relocate the city council meetings for the month of May and June. Let's have the staff report. And we get seventeen.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. The installation of the audio visual equipment is going to take place next week, beginning on May fifteenth. As a result, staff is requesting that the meetings for May twentieth, June third, and potentially June seventeenth be held in, relocated and held in the Howard, Howard E. Hoffman Community Center, second floor meeting room. What staff will basically do is, we will record the meetings and post them on our cable TV networks the next day. The movement of the council meeting will also trigger the need to move any other meetings that are held here in the council chambers. So at this point, staff is requesting that council approve the relocation of future council meetings for, again, May twentieth, June third, and June seventeenth, or provide staff with other, other direction. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for the report. Any comments on the report? What is the?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we, it's been a motion made by Kearney that we approve the staff recommendations concerning such, and seconded by Torres. Any discussion on it? Send them with the council, please, votes.
For item number sixteen, the motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we've already disposed of seventeen, so let's hear item eighteen. Concerning additional funding for parks, civic centers, and the sheriff station parking lot rehab.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor, members of city council. Item before you has to do with the parking lot project improvement that has been going on, and I'm sure the council has been witness of it. There are four parking lots, one is just next door civic center, two parks, as well as the sheriff station. So, as you recall, on March fourth, the city council awarded a construction contractor Onyx paving. Work has started late March, it has made very good progress, in fact, we're ahead of the schedule, nearly completed. There are some items of punch list that we are working out with the, with the contractor, we haven't paid them fully, of course. And as you recall, staff anticipated a contract amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six, plus seventy-three thousand dollars in contingencies. While the unforeseen conditions that was encountered specifically in the civic center, and partly in the Roger Adams, I'm sorry, Roger Anderson's Park in, in their area was related to loose subgrade. Basically, there are pockets of clay that contributes to this condition. And in, in the industry, it's called pumping, you know, where the asphalt surface can't be just ground off, you know, like the rest of the parking lot. You know, you, you run into, I don't want to say quicksand, you know, but it's a loose material, you know, that you have to identify the perimeter of the area and excavate it, you know, to a certain depth. that you have to identify the perimeter of the area and, uh, excavate it, uh, you know, to a certain, um, depth, and bring in crush miscellaneous base, you know, which is basically rocks and more asphalt, and then put the asphalt cap on it to make it stable. So we encountered in, um, those two parking lots, which, um, the total cost, um, came out to be approximately forty-six thousand dollars. This was not anticipated during the design and, uh, and preparation of the plans. So basically, the, um, staff is recommending, or requesting the city council to appropriate fifty thousand, you know, just to be on the safe side, in case there are minor items that might come up until the project is fully completed, uh, out of the ARPA funds, uh, and also because we are over the contingency amount of seventy-three thousand dollars, approve the contract amendment with Onyx. So that, um, concludes my staff report, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions of the report?
Oh, I have questions.
Okay.
So, eh, the, the, uh, the additional cost was a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars? Cause you said you use a contingency of seventy-three thousand, and now you want another fifty thousand.
Yes, the fifty thousand is above the contingency level, that, that's correct.
So the contingency was used, and so you need a...
That's correct, that's correct.
And, uh, and you said the project's not done, right?
It's not, it's not a hundred percent.
Because I brought to the city manager's, cause, a couple of concerns about this one out here, about the edging, about the slur on top, it, it, well, he knows all about it, okay. I'm, I guess we have to pay it, but I, I have nightmares about people doing roads and parking lots for years. You know, some of the shady people we had, we signed off on it. But, yeah, we need an extra fifty thousand from ARPA, okay, but it's an awful lot of money to be paying out for two little mis- I don't, little mistakes, but corrections.
Yeah, unforeseen circumstances, that, and, uh, a- also this, uh, additional funding, the forty-six thousand dollars, that is the net change, you know, over the contingency, uh, could have been a lot more, uh, you know, if you actually took the quantities of the crush miscellaneous base that they had to, you know, excavate and put in the place, uh, extra asphalt, so it was successful negotiation, and then we had some adjustment of other work quantities, you know, throughout the four, uh, parking lots that, uh, contributed to, you know, relatively being low, you know, forty-six thousand, otherwise it would have been more.
Okay, so that's the unforeseen conditions, okay? Okay, so what?
You wanna take a motion?
Yeah, you know, you wanna take a motion.
Okay.
So, the most has been made by Kearney that, uh, we accept staff's recommendations.
I'll second that.
For the amount of fifty thousand dollars, and also the approval of the contract amendment. And seconded by Quavis, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
For item number eighteen, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thanks, sir, for that report, you, you wanna stay up there for this one?
Yes.
Okay, item nineteen is award of, um, construction contract for, um, a crosswalk project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this item will, uh, specifically make Mr. Blackney, uh, happy on the one hundred and forty-seventh street between Hawthorne and Prairie. Uh, last year, when I was, uh, when I was here, we had a, a traffic committee, and the concerns, uh, you know, of people speeding and so forth, in that section of one forty-seventh was brought up, you know, we did some investigation, uh, basically we categorized, you know, two types of, uh, traffic safety improvements. One is real easy, uh, you know, to add the, um, the continental crosswalks, you know, which prove to be more visible, you know, for the, for the vehicles, and catches their attention. And then there are some other traffic safety that, uh, we are currently talking to our on-call traffic engineers to, to see, you know, what is possible and implement it. Uh, the, uh, the crosswalks is really the essence of the staff report. Uh, so, we dusted off from the discussion last year, you know, we brought it up, we advertised, um, on April twenty-nine, um, we received only one bid, uh, from Superior Pavement Markings, uh, and, you know, just as you might be, you know, I was concerned, you know, how come there was no more interest, you know, in bidding for this project? And we realized that it was relatively small project, and also a lot of contractors are not interested in the small project. However, in, um, in evaluating the, the reasonableness of their bid is well within the standards. Uh, we're looking at three intersections, you know, if you're familiar with that section of the one forty-seventh. Uh, Avis and Large currently have the, um, the continental crosswalks, and there are three intersections that don't, Eastwood, um, I believe, um, Freeman, and Osage. Uh, so, they're gonna put the continental crosswalks there, the bid is good, uh, we spoke with the city attorney's office, um, and, you know, there wa- there was an effort to go out, uh, you know, to solicit more bids, um, and so, uh, with the fifteen percent contingency, um, our recommendation tonight is to, um, award the contract in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars to, uh, the Superior Pavement Marketing, um, of Cypress, California, and also, um, approve construction contingency in the amount of little over five thousand dollars, for a total of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. And that would hopefully, uh, implement some immediate taffy, uh, traffic safety measures on the one forty-seventh.
Yes, ma'am, that's helpful.
Knowing that you work with these companies on a regular basis, do you know anything about Superior?
They're a very good company, they're very experienced.
Being that it, that, that's our only bid, that's my, my concern, as they have already stated, we have issues with being here in the city, and so it worries me that we only have the one bid.
Right, and this company is a striping company, uh, Councilwoman, and so it's a relatively easy operation, and they're a good company, they have done similar work elsewhere, we have checked their background.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so they're simply doing the striping?
Yes.
For this project, not any street repairs, anything?
And still, it's the fact that we only got...
No, I, I get, I'm, I'm totally with you, cause we've, we've been there before.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so they're gonna do striping on three streets and leave the other two the way they are, correct?
That, that's correct, that's correct, uh, from what I recall in the field, I believe it is, um, I believe it is Avis that the leg, one leg needs some refreshment of the, because it, it just aged. Uh, and we'll make sure that all five, you know, look good, you know, but the primary...
That's my question, we're gonna...
Yeah.
Do them all one time, make it all uniform, instead of having two white ones, two, and then three yellow ones.
No.
Are they gonna be uniformed?
They're all gonna be uniform, they're all gonna be uniform, and it's gonna be, uh, thermoplastic, so it's gonna last longer.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
Hi, thank you.
Yeah.
That's a good, yeah, good observation. Okay, all right, any other questions on this report?
Or motion to approve?
Motion is made by Quavis that we approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
Maybe some kind of delay, maybe? Okay, for item number nineteen, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you for that report. Let's hear from item twenty.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, uh, we are here for First Amendment Contract Services Agreement for city, for instructor to use city facilities for Dunkin' Subakdo. Uh, the martial arts program is one of our largest, most popular, uh, contract class programs. Uh, the original contract, which was signed last Ju- July, was for, uh, an amount of seventeen thousand dollars, and what we do is we, uh, go off the previous year's, uh, projections or actuals when we set the contracts, so we're neither too high or too no, too low, but sometimes, you know, you just have an overflow of students, you don't know when it's gonna happen, but it happened in this case, so, uh, just a reminder, these are pass-through fees, okay, so these are fees that go from the instructor, uh, actually from the, the participants to the instructor, unlike, uh, before, we changed due to AB five, the seventy-thirty split. So this doesn't affect the city budget, uh, whatever they earn, we pay them. So the number that I'm gonna give you is, it's not a fictitional number, but it's, uh, a number that doesn't mean we're gonna spend that amount of money. So, again, the contract was signed for seventeen thousand dollars so far, with two payment periods left. Dunkin's, uh, Subakdo, and they've been with us since the community center opened in two thousand and twelve, so they're over ten years with the city here, so they've been paid, uh, as you can see on Attachment B, uh, fourteen thousand, uh, through the winter session, so we still have two payment sessions to go. Uh, so we're asking for a contract amendment, uh, to go from seventeen thousand to twenty-two thousand. I, I suspect they'll probably land somewhere between nineteen and twenty-one thousand, but we don't know, if they have a huge boost in this, in the second half of the spring or the second session, it could go higher, that's why we go a little bit higher, cause we don't wanna come back for another contract approval. So, that's what we're doing here, and also, just another reminder, that our revenue is not coming from the instructors, as it used to do with the seventy-thirty split, our revenue is from the hourly fee paid by the instructor at twenty-five dollars per hour. So, uh, very simple issue, we did one of these a couple of meetings ago with, uh, Chapala Dance Academy, so there's absolutely no, no fiscal impact to the city's budget, it's just a paper trail and passing through, the, the money through from the participants to the instructors. So staff recommends that the city council, number one, approve the attached First Amendment to Contract Services Agreement to use city facilities between the city of Londale and Dunkin's Subakdo LLC, for a total amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment. Uh, city manager's purchasing authority is fifteen thousand dollars, that's why we're bringing this to you folks now.
Okay.
Uh, that's the first option, and second option is to provide further direction, so that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, you answered one of my questions, and that question was, um, why was this coming before, before the council? And you answered it in terms of the, the, um...
Yes.
The city manager's, um, signature authority, so thank you for that clarification.
If there's some questions, I'll move to approve.
Okay, okay, you didn't have any questions.
I'll second it on the first option one.
First option, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion, motion's been made that we approve the first, first option by Quavis, um, and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Any discussions on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
Okay, for item number twenty, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mm-hmm, thank you. Okay, let's hear twenty-one, let's hear about our legal fireworks suppression plans for twenty-twenty-four.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report you have before you is in regards to this year's illegal fireworks suppression plan for twenty-twenty-four. Uh, as you are aware, residents have to suffer through noise, pollution, and trash caused by illegal fireworks every year, and as a result, the illegal fireworks suppression plan was created in twenty-twenty-one. In that year, we had an eight-week plan that lasted, um, for two months before the Fourth of July holiday, in which we shifted our SAO, uh, teams to night shifts, it yielded twenty citations, and that was the first year in which we learned several things about the plan. In the following year, in twenty-twenty-two, we issued forty citations and dropped the plan from eight weeks to four days. Um, and then last year, we had arguably the most successful plan in the years that we've had it. You know, we've introduced civilian staff to the plan, um, we shortened it to just two days, and we issued, uh, eighty-nine total citations, yielding, uh, one hundred and ten thousand dollars in citations. Um, this year, we've streamlined the plan even further. Uh, one of the challenges that we had with last year's plan was that although we issued more citations than ever, we also saw more appeals than ever, including many citations were being challenged in superior courts. Um, for that reason, we still have, uh, a number of court cases that we have to go forth in Superior Court. Um, some of our deputies had to appear in Superior Courts recently, as a month ago, as did city staff. Um, so, one of the arguments against the, the plan from last year was that if we weren't trying to get money, why were we in undercover vehicles using city civilian staff? So this year, we streamlined it, we've spoken with Sergeant Smith, and we've agreed to just use deputies on a two-day basis. We know in historically that ninety-five percent of all the citations that we issued occurred on the third and the fourth, so there's no reason to, to have it out further when it's caused additional costs. So for this year, we're looking to have just July third and fourth, with only overtime deputies on the Fourth of July, and all units in black and whites. Um, Sergeant Smith is aware of this, we estimate, using the youth day parade as an approximate, approximation, um, we're hoping to get as many as thirty deputies here that night, including sergeants and, and other deputies, uh, for overtime roles, and we're estimating a cost of roughly thirty thousand, if we can get thirty deputies. Um, and that concludes my report, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions of the, the report? I do have one, one question, um, with our new, um, security, um, private security, are they factored into this plan in any kind of way?
Uh, they're not, they can patrol, we don't have, necessarily have them targeted for that, they can't issue citations, meaning that their vendors are actually city employees or, or, we did not authorize them for that, and they're not, um, A thirty-two PC, so they, they won't be allowed to do that. Uh, we could speak to them, and that could be something we could utilize, but they can certainly patrol and be visible. Um, one of the reasons we wanna have black and whites this year, though, is to have a deputy presence to discourage, rather than just cite. So, um, we could certainly speak about using Southwest Patrol in that capacity, and even bringing in extra ones if we need.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other, uh, questions? Let's hear from, uh, the public on this item, I saw you there. Yes, sir.
Good evening, the efforts by Mr. Reyes, along with the city manager and the sheriff's department in putting together tonight's illegal fireworks suppression plan is appreciated. This is a solid plan, as it has developed from what has been learned from past years, and has also returned to basics. The substitution of undercover cars from our black and white patrol cars should be a significant factor in deterrence. While last year's high number of citations sends a message that illegal fireworks will not be tolerated in Londale, these are all issued after the offense had been committed. A heavy presence of an additional fifteen to forty deputies would present a serious visual deterrent. Most residents would prefer that fewer citations be issued and less bombardment on July fourth. One of the issues I had heard from previous years was that the cars used by undercover deputies did not have direct communication to dispatch. By using county black and white vehicles, that issue is resolved. However, will dispatch be able to handle all the calls received? In past years, it was not unusual to either get a busy signal or have a long wait before a call was answered. The use of social media, the cable channel, banners, and message boards are important tools to communicate Londale's enforcement against illegal fireworks. However, as Londale is about thirty, seventy percent rentals, would landlords be sent letters advising them that they could be held accountable for the actions of their tenants? I remember this was done several years ago. In the event of a citation, these letters would be documentation of prior notification of landlord liability for the illegal fireworks activity of a tenant. Residents also need to be reminded to report any illegal fireworks activity to the sheriff's department whenever they experience it in their neighborhood. Although the city manager, along with staff, were successful in writing many citations and experienced in the law offices on Londale on July fourth, they should enjoy July fourth with their families this year. Their efforts last year were appreciated by Londale residents. Hopefully, the additional deputies needed to make this plan successful will be recruited, as an increased presence is an essential component of the success of this plan, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, anyone who wants to speak on this item? Okay, what, what is the pleasure this body on, on this item? Yeah, unless, unless there's some comments, seeing none, I entertain a, a motion.
Approve?
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion by Quavis that would approve the stack recommendation concerning the legal fireworks suppression plans, and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
For item number twenty-one, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item twenty-two, uh, for Public Works, um, award of a construction contract for City Hall facilities.
And this one is huge, it's three, three million dollars. That's, that's probably, uh, the biggest chunk of the, uh, the ARPA money. All right, so, um, as council recalls, um, I was here on March eighteen, you know, when, uh, the council directed staff to advertise for this project, you know, it's, um, the improvements, uh, much-needed improvements in this building... You know, it's the improvements, much-needed improvements in this building, the city hall, and public works departments. Again, you know, city hall, painting the interior and exterior, flooring of the kitchen restrooms, you know, kitchen upgrades, plumbing fixtures, ceiling tiles, you know, the carpet over here on the walls, the texture wall, as well as efficient lighting system and ventilations. Public Works is also similar. We don't do any painting outside, but painting interior, you know, carpet, tile, kitchen. And also because Public Works is designated as emergency operating center, we wanted to upgrade the showers and the locker rooms, you know, just in case some emergency happens, you know, for the extended stay. So the project was advertised. We opened bids last week on April thirtieth and we got three bids this time. It's large. The bids were good, under the budget. Developers General Contracting was two point or two million seven hundred and twenty thousand and some change. Guy Construction was right behind them, thirty thousand dollars and some change more. And Point Design was two point eight. So staff reviewed the bid from Developers General Contracting, the lowest responsible responsive bid. They're from Irvine, California. And so with the ten percent contingency, we were making the recommendation to award the contract for two million seven hundred and twenty thousand and nine cents to be exact and two hundred and seventy-two thousand and one cent to be exact for a total of two hundred and, or two million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand and ten cents to be exact for this project. I went ahead and included a section in your staff report that briefly speaks about schedule and logistics. You know, I just wanted to make sure that the city council was aware that we are mindful of, you know, this big project. It will undoubtedly have impact on the city staff workplaces. So we're going to be closely working with the contractor as far as the schedule, as far as the phasing, as far as the, any kind of temporary alternate work locations and where those might be to minimize the impact. That completes my staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the staff report?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we see any unforeseen additional cost?
I hope not. I hope...
Because, you know, when you start doing certain remodeling, things come up. Are we kind of budgeting for that in case?
I think, I think project of this size, you know, specifically that you're not digging the ground or anything like that, you know, that is sufficient contingency being asked tonight. So I hope not.
And they'll stay on schedule?
Yes, yes. I'll see to it that it stays on schedule.
Then I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to paint the community center too, also the city hall? And I hope it's not this butt-ugly white color we have out there. I hope it's something, what do we say, burn it? What color green do we want? Soothing green because of Longdale? Remember in the...
Yes, a nice green, but I can't remember the shade.
Because the colors we picked, you know, cheapest paint you could buy, I think. And we gotta, we gotta spruce it up. We gotta do this building and the community center to be uniform. And then also the lettering on the east side of the community center.
Soothing green.
You can't even read those no more. So I guess we're going to do that, hopefully in black. So we need like a nice soothing green. Not this ugly, what do you call this? White out here. A nice color for Longdale. Those are my suggestions. I'd like to see them different colors.
There's, I mean, this is off-topic, but losing our high school, I think one of their gymnasiums, they did a really nice green. It's, I don't know if you've seen it. It's a very nice shade.
Soothing is... Soothing is the part I would be concerned about.
Soothing. We were in the budget scheme to soothe the green. But, you know, those are my...
I get your point, yeah.
You know, the paint color and make sure we get the east side of the building, Longdale, painted up so we know it's Longdale Community Center.
So we're already in the unforeseen conditions, right?
It's not unforeseen. You gotta buy ink. The only addition I can do is paint the community center.
But it was unforeseen, but we can see it coming.
Yeah.
All right, we can see it coming.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that input, those comments. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
A motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it with the color and the lettering painted.
Okay, Quavis says a motion that we approve the stack recommendation and Kearney has seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with the council, please vote.
For item number twenty-two, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
That was easy.
Okay, let's hear our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, real quick, I have an announcement. Neighborhood watch meeting tomorrow at seven PM at our community center. So please, all the folks that are interested in getting involved, we look forward to seeing you tomorrow. That's all I have at the, and it's going to be, I'm sorry, it's going to be held at the, you know, Harold E. Hoffman Community Center Neighborhood Watch Group meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Let's hear from Councilman Quavis.
The city attorney, or Sean, could let us know a little bit about the property on one sixty-seventh? The litigation that we have?
Sure.
People have been asking.
I believe one sixty-fifth?
Sixty-fifth.
Yes, ma'am. So city staff worked, city staff went through a full administrative process trying to get code compliance citing the resident, really doing everything they could until they finally had to turn it over to our office. We have begun a legal process that requires us to file with the court and then seek court approval to actually go on the property and remove the offending items with or without approval of the resident. That's a difficult thing. It takes some time for a court to agree to that. And without getting into too much detail that I really can't go into because it's ongoing litigation, it's unfortunate that the property owner has not come around. But we're really traveling down about three different avenues right now and trying to gain compliance in any of these three different ways. It's very important to us. I know how important it is to the city council and to staff. And we literally talk about it daily. So it's at the top of my list.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't you mention, if you can, that these possible litigation has been processed before it was subject of a media story?
Oh, yes. This, by the time the matter appeared in the media, it had been referred to our office approximately a month before and had already actually been filed with the court about a week before. And in fact, when the media was alerted to that fact, they were able to get the court documents, the ones that are publicly available, right away. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I logged, the past two weeks I've been logging into the metro meetings. It's ridiculous. They seem not to care about small cities. All they care about is the larger cities. When someone brought up crime, according to certain board members, they don't think they have crime. But the crime on the metros are growing and they need to look hard into that before they come to Longdale. So hopefully on May twenty-third, they listen to our residents and listen hard. But those meetings to me, it's ridiculous. They just sit there, some of them get up, don't pay attention at the residents that are speaking. It's not good. They allowed our residents to speak when they did not have a quorum. That's why Holly Mitchell moved the date to May instead of voting this past meeting. If it was me, I would have stopped the resident and said, I apologize or apologized to the resident. But only one board member apologized and that was Holly Mitchell. Everybody else didn't care. That was my two cents on the metro and thank you, Sean, for being there. I also participated on the cleanup, City of Longdale Cleanup Day. I want to thank the beautification committee for putting it together. It was, I didn't think we had a good turnout. But those that turned out came out. I appreciate all their hard work. Let's see. I did also join the Assemblymember Tina McKinner's Budget and Legislative Town Hall Zoom meeting. She, at that meeting, she said that she was sending a letter to the Metro Board this week to support Longdale Robert Poenmeyer's suggestion of going through Hawthorne Boulevard, not on the road. Hopefully, Assemblymember did send the letter in. And let's see, what else do I have? And I want to thank those residents that dialed in on that day. There was twenty of us that dialed in to her town hall. So thank you to those residents that joined the Zoom call. This past weekend, I attended the WRD Fourteenth Annual Groundwater Festival. We got there, or I got there around eleven o'clock. I did not leave until they raffled that dishwasher, which I did not win. But they gave away a lot of nice prizes towards the end of the event. Well-attended. Hopefully, next year when they do it, we could have some more Longdale residents attend. And let's see, what else? That, that's it for me. Yep, that's it. Sorry, it was long this time.
That's it? No, that's okay. That's fine. It was long last time, but that's fine. Good job, thank you.
Interestingly enough, I haven't written down a couple of items. The first one is, I also was signed into the Zoom for Tina McKinner's Town Hall meeting and found that interesting. I also attended a Contract Cities meeting and a second meeting that through Contract Cities called the Legislative Committee Meeting. And I also participated in the Youth Day Parade. I want to say thank you to Mike for all of his hard work and really all of the hard work that you have given us the whole time that you've been here and knowing that this was your final Youth Day Parade. As being the guy that ran the whole thing, I want to tell you thank you. I really appreciate that event and look forward to it every year. So kudos to you. We're going, we're going to miss you on those kinds of things and the many things that you do for us. But that's probably the first time and you'll hear many more times, I think, this month from me how much you're, you've got big shoes to fill coming up here, so.
Pleasure was mine.
All right, my list of things that I would like to talk about tonight. Speaking about the fireworks suppression that we just talked about, are our license readers going to be in before the Fourth of July by chance?
I don't believe so, but they wouldn't be effective in anything like this because they're only taking pictures of the license plate.
That's correct. They're only taking pictures. But my thought is it's going to be bigger than this and it's abstract. I feel like we have a lot of our illegal firework people are coming in from other cities to shoot off their fireworks.
I agree.
On this one, which leads me to my next question. When we find a fireworks supplier, somebody that is selling them out of their garage or the illegal vendor, I don't know what the terminology is I'm looking for, have we upped our fine as high as it can be to the state of California currently?
Are you saying for the sale of fireworks?
Yes.
We are at the max, I believe.
Yeah, where our, the city's fines are for use, fines for sale and fines for possession of quantities that would be for sale. That's all set by the state. Our fines are up as high as the state's, which means that, yes...
Even for the sale or even for a distributor?
A distributor of illegal fireworks is definitely a state law violation. So we cannot have our own that duplicates it, but those fines are high.
Okay, that's what I want to hear because I don't want to go backwards. We're on the right track of getting these things out of here. And so I had been asked about that particular question and I thought I would bring that up today. Another thing that I wanted to check in on and maybe Ahmad could help me with this one. I don't know if you've heard, but I have been trying for months and we're talking now it's almost close to a year that I have, since I've had my first complaint over the underpass at Marine that does not have anything to do with Longdale, but it is affecting Longdale residents who are walking from the metro station back into Longdale. That underpass is half the responsibility of our neighbors, Redondo Beach, and half of it belongs to Hawthorne. I have been communicating with the Redondo Beach Councilperson from up here, but I'm hearing crickets. Is there any way that you can check in with Redondo and check in with Hawthorne about that underpass that is affecting our residents who are fearful at eleven o'clock at night going through a completely black underpass?
Mayor, council, we can look into it, but we can't, I mean, it's outside of our jurisdiction. We can just send an email, staff can look into it, but we can't go...
I'm only asking because it affects our residents.
Understood.
That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have a list. I have a list.
You have a list.
First, I attended the City Hearts Kids to Say Yes to the Arts at Performance at Hawthorne High School. I didn't understand a word they were saying because they were doing Socrates and...
You didn't understand all that?
I didn't stand, I just fell asleep because I didn't understand the words. Second, I attended the City Cleanup Day. There was a lot of trash out there. I had to turn in two businesses. Do you have a number of how many showed up, Mike? That day?
We do. It looks like in between the council members and our committee members, we only had about three regular citizens. We are disappointed by the numbers. I've had conversations with staff. We get very good turnouts for things like the parade and Coffee with the Cop and Pet Fair and Halloween Haunt. We have more trouble getting them to the events where it's more work-related. So I think tomorrow's night's Neighborhood Watch Meeting will be a good gauge to see if we, if the community comes out for things where it's not so fun of an event, more of a work event. So we did speak about possibly limiting it to cleanup volunteer portion just to one time a year rather than twice. That might get more members or more committee members out. We're still talking, Sean, about it. But I was disappointed as well. We did advertise in every way that we can. It was on the four oh five sign, it was on our flyers, it was on our media sites and our websites. And we were aware that the turnout was not, was not what we hoped for.
Do you think because they did away with your reindeer special free hot dog and drink?
I do think that was a portion. Definitely losing the sponsor was, yes.
Okay, then I attended with the mayor pro temp, burned at the ad hoc committee for the budget. I attended the CVUHSD, which is some of our high school district annual summit, safety summit, where they discuss drugs in the, in the schools and what they look like. Sergeant Smith was there. I asked about Narcan, if we can, we can do it here. Staff can have it here available in case somebody with a homeless offering passes out or drug overdose, we can actually administer it. And they said yes. I attended the Fourteenth Annual Groundwater Festival, the WRD. It was a great event, a lot of kids. I know a lot of family members came there. I met two city councilmen and the breakfast thing, stuffing their faces. and the, uh, breakfast thing, stuffing their faces, and I was out drinking tap water. That's not true. Uh, and then I also te- I attended the teachers, staff lunch at Losinger High School, sponsored by the PTSO, which was well-attended. The staff and the teachers thanked me, and I had nothing to do with it, but, okay. And, I had nothing to do with it, and they said, "Yeah, no problem. Anytime, next year again." Um, and, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem.
That's easy. Madam, Mayor Pro Tem, that's right.
Okay. Um, on April twenty-fifth, I attended the South Bay Cities Council Government, uh, Board of Directors Meeting. Um, and nothing to note there. Um, then on, sorry, I'm looking at my calendar. The Budget, or Pat already mentioned the Budget Subcommittee. I attended the parade as well. It was great. Thank you to staff. I actually liked the new route. Um, it's kinda nice, the way it leads you back to, to, um, city hall. So, I, I do like that. Thank you. And then, um, also attended the Groundwater Festival. For those of you that have never been to it, it's the Water Plunishment, um, District, right? And it's loo-, it's paramount, right?
Liquid.
Liquid, liquid, where the event takes place at their office. And they have a lot of activities. You can get, um, lunch there. They, um, have, um, interactive activities for the kids, reptiles, animals. You can fill your water bottle. So, I definitely, for those of you that have never been, go to it. It's completely, well, I guess your taxpayer dollars pay for it, but, you know, the food and, and whatnot is, uh, free. So, um, definitely, it's, it's for all ages. Um, and then, oh, and then last week I did attend the, uh, SCAG, um, their annual, um, what is it?
Conference.
Conference, yeah. They throw, um, I wasn't a fan of the seminars, but what I did, what I did do this year that I don't always do is go to each of the booths, and I learned things such as, I guess, Michelin tires branch out, and they, they look, we, we brought up, just like we brought up the crosswalks, and they apparently give you data on how many accidents occur. You can buy it from them, and apparently, when you say yes to your phone on tracking, that's what gets fed into some of those companies that, they can then, cities can purchase it to get the data. So, just some interesting things that I learned going to the booths. Um, but that was my past couple of weeks, and with that, I'll pass it along.
Very good. Thank you for that report.
So, I did also attend the, um, at Hawthorne High School, the Say Yes, um, to the arts, and I understood everything they said.
You must know it next to me.
I mean, you, you did have to take, um, what, Shakespeare and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah, Socrates.
And Socrates in school.
Who's Socrates?
I don't know. I, I get it mixed up with Plato.
Okay, yeah.
Right. So, I did, um, by the way, it's very untalented, um...
Oh, they're very good.
You'd have to say very talented, um, group of, um, young folks, and they had a couple of, the, the, I guess the guests were, were noted actors.
Yeah, I think the four young ladies.
Yeah, the four young lady, it was noted actors, um, in their, um, their, um, right. They were the judges, so that was a pretty good event. I took part, um, at the, um, Losinger High School. This past Saturday, they had the Take Part Festival. This festival, um, brought together from all the high schools, as well as middle schools, and some elementary schools as well, a festival, um, pretty much an art festival.
Yeah.
Um, all types of art, um, from, um, sculptures to, um, performance arts, murals and, um, all that, uh, kinda thing. It was really, really nice. This one, um, student, um, had honored to take a picture with. She had a, a piece of artwork that was really nice. It was like of a poodle, ceramic, kind of a ceramic, I don't know what all the material was, but it was really a unique, um, um, art piece, um, that, um, she did herself. So, that was, um, fun. Also attended the Youth Day Parade, and this year, the Youth Day Parade, oh, the weather was great. The weather was fabulous this year, uh, for the parade. Usually is, it, it's, it's hot, right? So, this year, the weather was, um, great. Great, um, um, parade. Um, a little light on the attendance on some, you know, on some parts of it, you know, but it was, it was great. Those who attended had a, had a good time. It was a lot of good, um, entries. And of course, afterwards, we had a, had a good time with, um, the trophy presentations and, uh, um, the booth. I wanna thank, uh, Mike Estes and his team for, for putting that together, another successful, um, parade. Um, as we stated when we gave out the trophies, this is your last parade, and we're gonna miss you, and perhaps next year you will be in a parade. Who knows? Right? Right. Right, but we appreciate, uh, all your hard work, uh, for putting on that, uh, that parade. And yes, this route is our second year doing this route. This route is definitely a keeper, in my opinion. Um, I attended Longdale, um, Cleanup Day, um, as, as well. I also attended the day before that, a cleanup, the four oh five freeway that was sponsored by, um, our Assemblywoman, uh, Tina McKinner's office. And you're talking about a freeway that needs to be cleaned. When you're driving on the freeway, you can't really tell, but as you step onto the, um, the property, not just the off and on ramps, but actually into it, oh my God. You know, you're talking, you know, all that stuff that's hidden, um, there, and there was a lot of stuff on the freeway. This is the one right off of the, uh, four oh five and, um, on Hawthorne. Um, and I also attended the, um, for a, a brief time, the, the Town Hall, the Budget Town Hall Meeting from the Assemblywoman, um, the online event. And with that, I have two other things I wanna mention real quick. Uh, I noticed the, um, the parking lot at Jane, Jane Adams? Oh, he left. Jane Adams, really, really nice. If you haven't seen it, the new parking lot, um, as, it came out pretty nice. I also noticed the, the cameras at, um, Hopper, um, Park. You know, you noticed the cameras?
Mm-huh.
Um, I was just happened to, to be there doing my exercise, and I felt like somebody was watching me. And I looked up, and behold, I saw this plaque, right, that talks about the new cameras.
It was mine, right? Did you see those cameras?
And they, there they were, right? Some new cameras. It's really important that we have those cameras there, because that park is, um, un-, it's not staffed. And that's the reason why we have, um, the cameras at the parks that's unstaffed, so we can make sure that all feel safe and, and comfortable. Um, a lot of, um, children goes to that park, um, particularly toddlers, you know, with their mothers, because of, they have the small apparatuses there. So, thank the staff for installing the cameras there. The last thing I wanna mention is, uh, we mentioned about a power wash. I wrote down this in my notes. Um, I guess this was Saturday, whatever, you're walking the boulevard, and you're talking about sections that need power washing, especially as you go from one forty-seventh, um, um, north on the east side of the street, can definitely use some power washing. I'm not sure how that works, but apparently, for years, people was having a bubble gum fest, because as you, as you walk, y- y- you can't avoid the bubble gum. There's more bubble gum, I just said bubble gum, than, um, cement, right? So, maybe if we get that new power washing, hopefully it's powerful enough to get the gum out, off without, um, destroying the cement. So, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And with that, that's all I have.
I, I actually forgot to mention, I did attend the parade, uh, the youth parade.
You did?
I did, and thank you, Mike, for, for everything. I will miss you, um, especially being part of your committee a while back. It, it was fun putting the, that together. But I have a feeling you're not gone. I think you're, you're gonna be around. Maybe the grand marshal next year.
Okay, let me mention this one more time about the metro. Um, they have this flyer that the community put out called Get on the Bus. Take the day off work. Is that important? Um, Longdale's providing a free bus ride to the meeting. On May twenty-third, the Metro Board of Directors will be discussing and potentially voting on which route they will move forward with. We need everyone to show up. And it says that the bus is gonna be meeting here at the city of Longdale at the community center at eight AM, because the meeting starts at ten AM. So, that's gonna be on May twenty-third. With that, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, May twentieth. In these here council chambers...
Across the street.
Across the street, yep, it said, yep.
You tested me on.
No, no, it does say in the council chambers, but it's across the street at the Harold Hoffman, um, Community Center, right across the street. It is now eight fifty-five. This meeting is adjourned.